I think we're live right now. For those of you that are online and in attendance here tonight, we'll go ahead and get started in just a minute. We're waiting for a few materials to get handed out. October 11th, school board meeting to order. First off, we have six board members present, one absent. Bruce Miller is absent tonight. With that, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to my left.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everyone. Okay, so Randy, any additional agenda items?
No changes.
Okay, very good. So with that, we're going to go into public comment. I have four public comment requests tonight. If there's anybody else here that would like to make public comment, can see Valerie down here in front. She should have sheets with her, and we'll do public comment. I just asked that we keep it to about four minutes for each public comment, and with that, I'll call the first person up. Vicki Lannick, please.
Sherman, sixth grade and fourth grade. I'm just coming tonight to share some kindness matters with comments that I've heard within the school district at sporting activities. Just thought you guys would like to know, basically. Couple of my kids have had Mrs. Milka, so I, we know the kindness and the kindness matters. So with that, I just want to share some things. Excuse me. Some people are losing faith with the Matteawan schools with this mask mandate because Van Buren, a lot of the Van Buren surrounding schools do not have that mandate. They are making it an option for parents. Just at the soccer field, a parent shared with me that when her son found out that he had to wear a mask this year, he goes, "This is going to be the worst year ever." It's sad to hear that from kids. There was another incident where a teacher is telling the kids, "If I see your nose, you have to take your mask off and put one on that I have in my classroom, and you have to pinch your nose so I don't see your nose." That, to me, is not kindness. That is selfish. Another comment from another teacher was, "I don't want to take anything home," and this is what my child said to me, that a teacher said. And I go, "If they're so worried about taking something home, then why are they teaching? Why are they here? They are educators first. They are not a mask police." Another teacher, well, actually, I'm sorry, it was a parapro, said to my child, "Because I want to retire healthy, so you need to put this divider up so that I can work with you." How is a kid first when my kid is getting a comment like that? That actually crushed my heart when I heard that. My child said that to me. So I am here again to advocate for this mask mandate to be rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Kaitlin Larson?
Hello. My name is Kaitlin Larson. I'm a fifth-year EMC student with Ported Central. I know this is not my school district, but I feel I should talk to you because I take a KVCC English class where a third of my class is Matteawan students. I am here to advise against all mask mandates for Matteawan school students. I hear all the time about how these masks are there to make us healthier, but I can't be the only one who these masks are making sicker. I, I have, for the past many years, had a usual, just a light sniffle during the winter season. Wearing these masks has multiplied that greatly. I go to school, put on a mask, and within minutes, my sneezing has got worse. I'm having much, I'm just being sicker. I'm getting a sinus headache, and then, like magic, it just disappears when I take them off. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kaitlin. Kimberly Larson? Yes, she's out on the table, and you can hand it off to Valerie down here in the front row for public comment. Please, Kimberly.
Yes, thank you. Hi, I'm Kimberly Larson. That was my daughter. Kind of proud of her. She did very well. For a student to speak in front of something like this in a microphone is very nerve-wracking, and so, yeah. I wanted to talk to you because I'm a pre-kindergarten educator, early childhood. My students are required to wear masks. I'm also certified math and physics, middle school, high school. I'm kind of a geek. I like science. I really like science. And I look at my students who are required to wear masks, and most of them, quite frankly, can't even put them on themselves. They need to come to me, and they have no clue how to get the loops over their ears, and so I'm putting them over their ears. But the problem is that I look inside those masks, and many of you guys, if you look at kids wearing masks, you don't see the inside. I get to see the inside, and it is gross. Oh my word, like ew. And think about three- and four-year-olds and their noses and all that grossness going on in their noses, and you want to wipe their nose and throw it away and sanitize and wash your hands and, you know, get past that. The, this stuff is getting stuck on those masks. And then I hear from adults who quietly admit, "Oh, by the way, I don't wear, I don't wash the mask all the time." And I see that some of you guys are wearing disposable masks. Awesome. For those of you wearing cloth masks, how often do you wash it, and how often do you touch it? Because, you see, there's all these germs getting on that cloth. And then I have my students going home and coming back with the same mask, and I'm seeing the same spots inside, and I'm seeing the same snot inside, and I'm seeing spots I can't even identify inside. And I'm seeing this little girl who had snot on hers, and she wanted to get the snot off because it didn't feel good, and so she was holding up her mask in front of the register in our classroom trying to dry it off. And what was that doing to the germs inside that mask? And how is that making all the other students healthier, and how is that blocking the germs getting to the students? Because hello, she was blowing those germs to the entire classroom, and I was going, "Ah, stop. Let me give you a new mask, please. Let me put a new cloth mask on you," because they have to wear class masks. We are not able to do disposable according to the rules that I'm working under. And so I think about that, and I think about middle schoolers and high schoolers, and do they really wash their masks the way that they should? These kids, we can't even convince to wear deodorant half the time. Really? So I'm looking at that, and I'm looking at science, and I'm looking at the rules in the high schools and the middle schools where they can go to class wearing their masks, and they go through the hallways and wear their masks. And at Port Central, they don't even have to wear them in the hallways because somehow COVID turns off in the hallways. And then they go to lunch, and they take their masks off, and no COVID. So I'd like to say, it doesn't actually make you healthier, does it? It gets, I mean, my daughter just said, her mask is making her sicker. And if my children are going to a school and supposedly getting healthier, supposed to wear them, I want their immune system to be at the peak because they will get exposed. They will. But if they're wearing masks with all those germs and breathing, what is that doing to their immune system? And when they are exposed, what does it do? And you guys are lucky that I, my school system doesn't have, you guys, Van Buren doesn't have the mask mandate from the Health Department. Kalamazoo does, and they're being threatened with massive money problems if they say, "We don't want that." You guys have the freedom, and I'm jealous of that. You guys have the freedom to say, "Let's let our kids' immune systems do their jobs." And so I'm asking you, please, do not force your students to wear a mask, because those masks, as Caitlin said, they're not making the kids healthier. And quite frankly, many of those kids are wearing the same mask day after day after day. I'm seeing it. I'm seeing it amongst many of my students where I, I'm sending notes home, "Please, please, parents, please wash these masks." And I don't know what is on the inside of some of those masks, but it is not something I want close to a child's mouth. It really isn't. So please, when you're thinking about these masks, think about the true health, the overall health, not just the immediate health. You know, that we're blocking some, possibly stopping a virus. Let's, let's think about their total immune system. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Travis Grinwood, we've got a handout board. I'll pass out.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know you guys have a under-thanked job these days. So in August, I showed up. I spoke. My message was, "Let the parents decide. You wouldn't like it if I told you how to raise your kids. We don't like it when you tell us how to raise ours." The board made the decision that they were going to mandate masks. Last meeting, last month, I missed the meeting. The reason that I missed the meeting is because the board changed the date. I was told where to look for the meeting date. They didn't change the location of the meeting date on the website. It was a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Public Act 87 was passed on September 29th, signed by our governor. It explicitly states in Section 250, "It is illegal for a community health officer to mandate a mask or enforce a mask mandate on anybody under the age of 18." I've shared a copy of this with the board. I believe you guys have received it. I received a reply from Mr. Fleaner, Fleaner, sorry if I said that wrong, that basically said that you're not going to follow it. I'm paraphrasing. However, I believe the board should be the one that makes that decision, not the superintendent, respectfully. I would like to provide some statistics. When I did listen to the YouTube, I know there was at least one board member that said we wanted to follow science and numbers, so I'm going to run in that course and follow science and numbers. You have a handout from me. This is from the internet. I've cited the sources. I'm going to hold up a sheet for the camera. I think the numbers have since been updated a little bit, so they're not 100% accurate as of today, so I will note that. However, I want to just go through this list here. So in 2019, in Michigan, there were 20,865 deaths from cancer. In 2019, there were 25,500 deaths from heart disease. In 2020, there were 28,048 deaths from abortion. And during an 18-month period in Michigan, there were 22,355 deaths from COVID. If you adjust that COVID number to 12 months, it's a little less than 15,000. In Kalamazoo County, there were 597 deaths from abortion in 2020, and 387 during an 18-month period from COVID or probable COVID. Again, that number has been updated, so that number that's on your sheet is now incorrect. I would just want to point that out. I think it's now 495 as of today. Don't quote me on that. My point of telling you this has nothing to do with cancer, heart disease, abortions, or COVID. It has to do with the mass hysteria that places like this are creating. So I just ask you, you know, is this, is this really an emergency when there's so many other things that unfortunately people are dying from? Nobody wants to see people get hurt. It happens, unfortunately. So is this really an emergency? Is there an ulterior motive? Are we being used as a pawn in a political game of chess? After all, the favorite politician's phrase is, "Never let a good crisis go to waste." It's been never more important to vote and know what your elected officials are doing. We need to remove the elected officials that are creating this public hysteria, whatever that takes, through recalls and just voting differently at the polls. So, at the end of the day, we need people that support the Constitution. We need people that believe in America. We need people that respect individuals' rights. We need people that respect the ability for others to make their own decisions, and we, the people, need you, the listener, and let's do more than listen. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Travis. Aubrey?
I'm actually really glad that I went after him because he talked about elected officials. You are all an elected official, therefore you have a faithful service surety bond. Surety bonds have conditions. Such conditions include you do not violate your sworn oath of office. Do not participate in illegal activity and do not cause harm to your students. If you are in violation of any of these, you are subject to a complaint being filed against you personally with your surety bond holder. Any parent here has the right to file such a claim against you, and your school must provide them this form. If you get three substantiated claims against you, you lose your position on this board, and you are not eligible to hold any seat in public office ever again. Why is this? Because you will be considered non-bondable, and you can't hold public office without being bonded. I don't think we would have a hard time gathering up three parents here tonight who would file a complaint against your bonds. Parents here also have a right to bring you to small claims court should they wish to, and I'm happy to educate them on this process. Each parent of this school can bring you to small claims court for $3,500 for violating their minors' rights, although this is not about the money. They will bring you to small claims court because you don't get a fancy corporate attorney to defend you in small claims court. You represent yourselves. You have to represent yourselves and tell the judge why you have violated the Constitution in your oath of office, because your oath of office was to the Constitution. I looked it up. They have the right to file this. If you're found to be at fault, your bond will pay the $3,500 upfront, but they will come after you to get their money back. It's also, at this point, considered the black mark against you with your bond company. You're only insured for so much upfront, so eventually this result will be paying directly out of each and every one of yours' pockets. How many students you have in the school times 3,500. Bonds don't stop there, so if you are a contractor or a small business owner, you will no longer be bondable through these either. The process begins with following your sworn oath of office documentation, which I encourage everyone here to do. Hiding behind the Health Department will not save you from these repercussions. How are you in violation of your oath? You swore an oath to uphold the United Constitution. You are in violation of the First and Fourth Amendments. How are you in violation of the law? Show me one law, one legislation, one statute that gives you the authority to mandate any mask. You can't. You can only request that people wear a mask. You can't show it to me because it doesn't exist. Therefore, your authority is an illusion. I can show you some laws that you are in violation of. How about Federal Civil Rights Act Title 11, Section 2000? Declaring any of this as a school policy does not absolve any of you from facing the repercussions for these violations. The school is also in violation of Michigan Legislature 380.1307B. The state policy under Section 1307A shall include a clear statement that all the following practices are prohibited for school personnel in the public schools of this state under all circumstances, including emergency situations. One of these prohibited practices is requiring any restraint which restricts the breathing of a student. Masks restrict the breathing of students, thus you cannot require masks and be in compliance with a state policy. How are you in violation of infringing on the rights of students? A mask is a medical device, and as such, must be prescribed by a doctor, and the wearer must be given informed consent so they can understand the bris of wearing one. You have not received informed consent from anybody at this school. You haven't even tried, because you haven't educated them on the pros and cons of wearing one. Informed consent cannot be given using coercion or threats, which is what the school is doing. Wear the mask or else.
Aubrey, you're about 30 minutes, or 30 seconds over.
That's okay. The person behind you will finish reading it. Thank you. You have all been put on notice. I call for a roll call vote at the end of this meeting so you can be put on record for who is violating their oath. This oath right here is for the police. We stand with you. If you violate this oath, I know that you have a bond also, and you wouldn't do that. Your bond is to uphold the Constitution, and you always will. If you were to violate that oath, which, again, I know you wouldn't do that, you would be found un-bondable. Is that correct, sir? Most, if not all, of you don't wear a mask anywhere else, so why are you wearing one here? If I was getting married, you wouldn't have one on.
Aubrey, I need you to wrap up, please.
If you were in the movie theaters, you wouldn't have one on. Thank you for your time. That will conclude my statement.
Thank you, Aubrey. Okay, that concludes public comment period. We'll move into the consent agenda. Board, before you, you have a secretary's reports from the previous meeting along with some financial statements. An entertainment motion for the consent agenda unless something needs to be pulled.
So moved.
Thank you, Maureen. Does Maureen have support?
Support.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion on any of these items? Randy, anything that you'd like to point out? No hires this month, so.
We'll have a few at the next meeting.
Okay, very good. Any other conversations or comments from the board? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, motion carries. All right, Pam, you want to give us a financial update, please?
Sorry. The financial update, I don't have a lot to go over this month. That's not, not much has changed since last month. Carol Patridge is here this evening with Yo and Yo, our auditors, and she'll provide the presentation on the audit, so. And then I can answer questions after, after she goes, if we still have questions on the audit. I just wanted to let you know that we do not need to borrow for November debt payments. We do submit that annual application in case we need to, but for November payments, there was not a need. The S R 2 funding is now fully available from the state, and so is our summer school funds that would reimburse us for the programming we had this summer. I did hear just late last week that the, the United States Department of Ed approved Michigan's plan for S R 3 funding. That was kind of in question for a while. So we should be, sorry. So we should be getting more information probably pretty soon about how we're going to be able to access the S R 3 funding since that was approved. David Rose, our food service director, had applied for a grant called Tencent's A Meal Grant, and we were awarded that grant, and that was, it's a matching-type grant, state-funded, to purchase and serve Michigan-grown fruits and vegetables for students when we're serving food in the food service program. And that's, you know, we would purchase that anyway, so basically the grant is covering some of those expenses, so that's good. Our official amount that we were awarded is about $34,000, so that was a nice grant to receive in the Food Service Department. And then just, it's been going better, but just still making sure that families know that all, that food, meal, all meals are free this year to all students, so that's all, that's all I had.
Thanks, Pam. Sorry, I put you on the spot there. My iPad slid forward, and I jumped all the way to your presentation.
That's okay.
A little sooner than I thought. Any questions for Pam from the board? All right, very good. I'm going to turn it now over to Randy for a true blue award.
Yes, thank you. So tonight, I'm going to,
Yes, thank you. So tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to come your way in a minute, so stay over there. We want to honor Deputy Marcus Hamery. Well, now that I put you on the spot, Marcus Wave, I think everybody knows Marcus. Marcus actually retired at the end of this summer. Marcus was our liaison officer for four years. I know you served many more years on the force, most recently with Van Buren Sheriff's Department. So we really appreciate everything you've done for the school and the students, most importantly, and being available and around. So we've got this true blue. Let me read it for you and then I'm going to come over there, okay? So honoring Deputy Marcus Hamery, four years of service with deep appreciation of your selfless dedication and valuable contributions for believing in our mission and the well-serving of students in the Madawan community, presented this day, 2021. So Marcus, let's give Marcus a round of applause. And also I want to take a picture with you.
Thank you, Marcus, for your service. All right, we'll go into the next item, which is the audit overview. And Carol, you can go ahead and use that mic, would be great. We do have people, just so you're aware, we have people stream watching as well, so speaking into the mic clearly will help them be able to follow along online as well.
You should have a packet of information that I gave you. There's four things in that packet. There's the actual financial statements, the big book. There will be a single audit, which is the audit of your federal dollars that's required. There's a letter that we are required to submit that to management that just addresses some things. And then kind of an overview is the, the one that's up on here with the kids on the front. I've kind of summarized what I think are the key points to kind of go over with you tonight. So if you want to look at that one, that has all our information. I like to start with what the district's responsibility and then what we do as an auditor. So we are an auditor. You're responsible for generating those financial statements. Pam Prince gives you those on a monthly basis. Our job is to come in and do an audit of those financial statements. So you're responsible for preparing those financial statements. I want to say that Pam did a great job this year. I appreciate her and Susan. Our audit this year, I think, was probably the most efficient we've had in a long time, so everything went really smoothly. They got everything to us when we were out here. We typically do some requests while we're out here. We do a huge laundry list of things before we get here that we need them to upload to port, the portal and that type of thing. And then when we're out here, we do some kind of surprise selection of things that we want to look at, documents, supporting things. They're very efficient on getting everything to us immediately, so we were, I think they just wanted to get rid of us, but, but we did, we're able to kind of move things along real smoothly because of that. So, so our job is to, and express an opinion on those financial statements. So you'll see that you're responsible for the financial statements. We're just expressing an opinion on them, so. Couples, I wanted to kind of go through what some of our procedures are. We typically have Pam document all your internal controls. We look at those. We look at kind of your policies, procedures, and then we take those to determine how we're going to kind of look at those, see where could there be possible concerns, issues, that type of thing. We develop an audit program based on that. So we look at a risk assessment, say where's, where's the risky things, where are things, where could something go wrong? And that's how we develop those audit programs. We do some substantive procedures where we're actually verifying documents. We do some analytical procedures where we're looking at something as a percentage of something. Does relationships make sense, that type of thing? One of the ones that we do that's some kind of a big testing is your O P E B and your pension, just to make sure that all the information you're submitting there is correct, because that determines that liability that it's a huge dollar amount on your books. We also do an unpredictability, something unique, something we haven't done in the past, mainly because there is some predictability. We look at a lot of similar things because you have similar risks, but they sure we did a lot with the S R funds and the C R F funds, just to make sure that those programs were in compliance. And then we look at some government standards. We look at your single audit. We had to do that this year because of the large amount of federal dollars all the districts are receiving. And we have some very specific grant compliant testing we have to look at and some other compliance testing that we have to do from the Ministry of the Department of Ed, just related to your website, your submissions, various different things, probably 30 things that we have to look at. Good news, all those things were good. We prepare your financial statements from what the trial balance that Pam gives us. So these financial statements are prepared by us, but they're all your numbers. We do do all your submissions, M D E, the I S D, the State of Michigan, and then we also do a bond audit.
We do a bond audit.
Yes. We do a bond audit. We audit annually and then at the completion of the bond, when all the proceeds or substantial amount of the proceeds are, proceeds are finished spending, then we do kind of a final report to the State of Michigan. So we're looking at the bond audit, those dollars to make sure they're in compliance with what the bond wording is. Good news is, we issued an unqualified opinion, which means that we didn't find any material misstatements during the, the course of the audit, so it's a clean opinion. When we looked at your internal control procedures, we do an evaluation. We did not have any material weaknesses, no significant findings. We don't issue an opinion on your internal controls, but we do look at those to make sure we don't see anything or have any concerns. As part of the single audit, we look at all your compliance with all your federal guidelines. You're a high-risk oddity because you have to have two clean audits, and we had some findings two years ago. So you are a high-risk oddity, which means we have to look at more as part of the single audit. You have had now two clean audits, so you will be a low-risk oddity next year. Your major program that we looked at was the C R F funds and then when we had a non-modified, an unmodified opinion on both of those, so no material items of any concerns as part of the single audit. The letter that we have in there is our required communication, so if we had any, any kind of misstatements that we had found as part of our audit, we would have to disclose those. If there were any material audit adjustments, if we had any adjustments that we just said, oh, it's not big, let's just ignore that kind of thing. They're not mature. We don't have to pay, post adjustments, but we do have to disclose those in the letter. But we didn't have anything in that, in that arena either, so. We do have as part of that other communications, a couple of management comments. We did as part of your grant reimbursement request, we have a recommendation there in terms of when you submit for reimbursement, you're picking dates, you know, first quarter, the second quarter. We shouldn't use exact quarters, but we're saying we should be cumulative so that in case something got adjusted in the first quarter after the fact, after you submitted reports, it would be picked up in that second report, so. Instead of looking at each one of them independently, looking at that everything cumulative and then deducting out what the first, what the previous requests are, so. We've talked to Pam on that and that's going to get adjusted. And then we also talked about having somebody else review those. And the other thing is on your grant budgeting and reporting, just making sure that the, the revenues, you're not reporting more expenses to a grant than what you have available on that grant. All right, that, next page has kind of a summary of your funds and your revenue and expenditures. You'll see in your general fund, you had about 37 and a half million in revenues, 35 and a half revenue, 30 and, 35 and a half million in expenditures, so you had an excess revenue of about 2 million that added to your fund balance. Then on your capital projects, you've got your 18 and 17 capital projects, where for the most part, you're just expending those funds down, and you have about 2 million left in both of those funds. Your food service, you'll see you had a deficit there of 44,000. A lot of fund balances that accumulate, or a lot of lunch programs have accumulated balances, and they do regulate that fairly highly with the state, so making sure that you're not accumulating too much funds in there. The new one that you have is the schools, Student School Activity Fund, which was kind of, you've always had those funds, but they didn't show up on your financial statements. Those that get added this year have to be part of your financial statements, so you'll see that new column. And then your debt service and your capital projects are those last two. Next page just shows your, your fund balance or your general fund, your original budget where you had a deficit of about 2.7 million, your final budget where you had revenue of about a million, and then what your final actual numbers were, so. And your revenue came in fairly close, your expenditures, just some slight variances there, about three, less than 3%. And you'll see, most districts had a, just because of the S R and the federal, extra federal dollars this year, most people did have, every school I've had has had an excess revenue this year just because they may have used that to circumvent some of their original budgeted expenditures. Next one just shows your general fund revenue and kind of a pie chart of where that comes from. Your federal dollars is the one that changed significantly this year. It went up 5%. Last year it was only 1.3%, so that more than doubled. And then on the expenditure side, you'll see that 80% of your expenditure is salary, is your benefits and your states, and your salaries. And in, within Van Buren County, you probably have, you do, within Van Buren County, you have the lowest per pupil revenue and also the lowest per pupil expenditure, just because your revenue is, is low because you don't get a ton of local dollars, you don't have a, a big tax base, and you don't get a ton of federal dollars. You're the lowest one in Van Buren County in terms of federal revenue per student, so. So as far as the expenditure side, a lot of what, you're probably one of the lower districts within this, even the State of Michigan. I think you're 798 last year out of 825 schools, so in terms of total expenditure per student, so. And a lot of that, you're really low in terms of building and administration and operations and maintenance, so I think part of that is just the, the dynamic of being consolidated schools and not having a ton of buildings and a lot of administrative overheads, so. Next page just has your 10-year enrollment trend, so you'll see a little bit of a decline. This is actually better than most districts. Most districts, kind of a sliding scale. You've kind of been kind of steady across, so. Next page just has your general fund balance, and you'll see where that's peaked up these last couple of years, but, and then the, the percentage of your fund balance. Last year you were at 17%. That's fairly consistent with what the statewide average is. That's about 15 and a half, so. And then you'll have a, you had a little bit of a jump this year, and those numbers haven't been calculated, but everybody's numbers have gone up this year, so. And then this last slide is our, just your MIPSers rate that you're having to pay. You're paying $43 for every dollar of salary to MIPSers for benefits. And you'll see that difference between the green line and the red, or the blue line is what's being funded by the state and kind of paid back to you as part of your state aid, but your, so your unsubsidized rate is at 28%. And then just a couple changes that we have, new accounting pronouncements. The G A S B 84 was what we implemented this year when we added those fiduciary funds, the student activity funds to your books. The one that's coming up next year will be leases, where we will have to add leases, so even if you had operating leases, cap years is where you might have some, those have to be added to your books next year. May I have any questions for me?
Thanks, Carol. Yeah, I'm sure we'll have some questions. I know I have some, maybe some comments. Any other board members would like to go first?
You mentioned we were 795 out of 825 for expenditures.
Per student, yes.
Per student. Do you know what it was, what our revenue, where we fit in that scale for revenue?
Your revenue was, I can tell you, I have the report.
I'm sorry if I'm overs-
Nope, you're fine. That's right here. Put my glasses on, though. You are at general fund revenue, all sources, 767.
767 out of 825 schools in the state.
Out of 829 districts.
Okay.
So, yep. You're low in, 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 in one thing, you know, especially since I, well, it was more important when my kids were students here, but your teacher salaries, you know, you're in the top third of the county in terms of teacher salaries, yet your total cost, and 80% of your cost is, is salaries, but yet your total, you know, per, per student cost is still within, is relatively low, so. If you look at the average of districts, the average federal revenue for districts with 35 to 4,000 students, general fund revenue per pupil is 9,000, or 11,374. Yours is 9,000. 9,380, so you're significantly lower than averages within that benchmark, but that includes the entire state, so you're dealing with some east side schools that have a lot of federal dollars.
Thank you. And this next question probably is more Pam and Randy, because sometimes these two data points get, you know, they're off from each other. So this summer, we were able to invest more in our, in the staff than we, than we'd had in the last few years, right? And I think some of that was the knowledge of how the, how the budget was and our fund balances, that, is that accurate, I guess, is my question?
Yes, that would be accurate. So in decide, making that decision and in negotiations, you have to take a look at the budget as a whole. And, I mean, since I've gotten here, we've been able to just really sharpen it and just, you know, and sometimes things were over budgeted and not used or just, you know, always looking for any, or looking for efficiencies in operations. And so the more you do that, the more dollars you squeeze out of your budget, and then you can direct it where you want, want it to go, which would, you know, the priority became the, the salaries.
So I guess I'll, you know, I'll just say this probably isn't a question, but I appreciate the work that you guys have been doing here, right? Randy, the whole administrative team on being able to, I mean, for the, for folks at home and folks in the audience that are listening, we are one, if you didn't hear it, we are one of the most, you know, least funded state, schools in the state. And we're able to, I'm, I'm proud of that we were able to, that we were able to put most of that money back in the classroom in the form of taking care of our teachers who take care of our kids every day, so thanks. Thanks to the teachers that are listening and, and thanks to, thanks for everybody for making sure that the, the dollars that we do get are spent wisely, so thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a, a few comments. I guess as part of the process, you know, I'm contacted every year by Yo and Yo with a series of questions and some open dialogue, and that went well. That was a good conversation that I had and, and just wanted to pass on to Pam and the team that Yo and Yo said that, again, like Carol was restating, that you guys were, were great to work with and were quick to provide them the data they needed to, to perform the audit in a, in a quick manner, so thank you for that.
Yep, you know, Mike, he loves people that respond quickly and he can just get, turn through the audit and get it done and not have it set on a back burner, so.
Right. Good.
Yeah.
And then I know, you know, we, as we look at the data and the crowd or the audience, I guess, online saw, you know, we still have funds and three bonds and we, we do have a presentation on bonds, so Randy will maybe speak to a few of the projects that are still ongoing or in play. And it kind of goes hand in hand with what Ted said. I think the-
I think this district did an excellent job managing those bonds to their budget that had contingency dollars available should we run over. And they, you know, in order to, to meet that budget, in some cases on some of those buildings, they had to, to think about what they were going to do, not knowing if there would be cost overruns or things like that. But most of the contingencies held and we've been able to use those dollars now for additional projects. But they still have to be within the scope of that particular bond. So it just doesn't fall back into the general fund. It has to be used within that scope. So I think that's important for folks to know. And again, I think Randy will speak to some of those projects that we're doing ongoing. Lastly, I, you know, I think, what a year for anyone in schools to, to plan a budget for this calendar year.
Yes.
When the state obviously never meets their deadline to create a state budget. You're in the middle of a pandemic. Quite frankly, we had no clue if we were going to get any money at all. There was, there was fears that there were going to be substantial cuts. Fortunately, there was the federal assistance that came to the states and was able to then get passed down to us. So I think that's why you see such a swing in the budget. And I gotta believe that was true across the state in many of the audits.
Across the board, all the districts had that similar situation. You're kind of going into it in June with kind of the worst case scenario and not sure what's going to happen. And then everybody had, you know, improvements by their final budget.
Yep. And then lastly, for me, I'd, I'd like to convey a thanks to the new administration team and Randy and Jay and others in the office, Pam. And I, I think, again, we, we have run a tight ship the last couple of years, not knowing what those dollars would be. I think there's some things that have paid off for that and you're seeing that in our fund balance. It's going to allow the school to do some things that we could never do. In my tenure on the school board, it was, would have never been possible to resurface tennis courts with general fund dollars. We would have had to wait for a bond. But I think, given the fact that we have those funds available and we've been able to do some great things for the teachers, we appreciate all they're doing for us. And still have some of those projects come through. I think it's a great testament to the team. So I say thank you on that. And there are other comments? Before we end this presentation, I do not believe we need a motion on this. This is just a presentation, it'll be right into the minutes. Okay, if no other comments, thank you Carol for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, bond update.
Pam, I'm scanning the crowd, looking for Tom. I don't see Tom.
So, right, late word is that they were not able to make it tonight. But I, I have some information if you'd like to share.
Sure, I think between Pam and I, we can kind of tag team this. Why don't you, why don't you lead off with what you've got?
Yep, they sent their apologies. But we did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago just to get an, an update as we have been on the bond project. The basics of it right now are punch lists are being worked on. And that would be for everywhere, even though we've been in the, the admin wing since January, there's still some small things that they just want to make sure they get, you know, every little last thing on their list to get taken care of as we want them to. So the whole building, and then over at the ECEC and the community wing parts, they'll be compiling that punch list. So those should be out very soon. And Brian is, you know, working on that as well, our new facilities director. The construction was approved and moving forward. I mean, you guys had approved it a while ago, but we just had to kind of get our ducks in a row with the final budget costs for the extra classrooms. And so that's a go based on the budget that they presented for the remainder of the funds. And then the signage package is rolling along and they should have prototypes for us soon. And I think that was the major parts of it. And then you do have the, the furniture order. I can kind of speak to that right now, even though that's down in new business if you want me to. That's for, the furniture order is through VS Furniture and it's for nine additional furnishing, the student only furniture for nine additional classrooms. That was all budgeted. Six of them were budgeted and then three were extra. But that is being contained in the contingency and that, and being covered that way, so. And there's funds there for that. And that's kind of what we were waiting for and make sure that that was all going to pan out. And it looks like it is. There will be probably on next month's agenda, one more furniture order for teacher furniture for that. They were finishing up the, for those extra classrooms. They were finishing up their quote and estimate on that. But that's a, a small part that should be less than like 27,000 or something, is less than, less than that. So that's a, a smaller piece of it, but. So that's what I know on the bond update.
Pam, one, one question, I'll put you on the spot. Did, did they ballpark the contingency balance after the furniture is, is purchased? I believe I saw a number floating around.
Yes, it should be around 240, 235 to 240,000 contingency left after all of this goes through.
Yeah, so on, on the current, current project, still around a little over a quarter of a million. And just want to thank the board again for adding those additional rooms. Remember back when we talked about that? And I think that's a good proactive step to ready that, that space for the future, for programming and so forth, so. Thanks Pam. I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay.
Just a quick question, health center is not part of this, right?
Correct.
Okay, I spoke too soon. I do have something to add to that. That is correct, but you know what? I think I'll leave that on the soups update if that's okay. I got kind of excited there about that, but I do have big news there.
Thank you Pam and Randy. Okay, school board report. I do not have anything, but I think maybe Sheri or Maureen attended an MASP function, legislative function in Lansing. Does either one of you like to speak to that?
Yeah, you want me to go first Sheri, or you want to go? We went to legislative day at the Capitol a couple of weeks ago. And just, I mean, it was a great day. They did a educator panel about, like, about the teacher shortage. They talked about some current legislative issues. Just one thing that they wanted us to kind of take back to our boards and, I mean, we were able to meet with, we had lunch with Sean McCann and Christine Morris. And we saw Beth Griffin, our other rep, kind of on the, on the floor. But we're trying to connect with her, but didn't, didn't quite make it. So we did see all our reps there and had some good conversation with Sean and Christine. One thing that is kind of pressing right now at the state level that I didn't really realize before I went, that you guys might want to reach out to our legislators, just an email or call, is, is this issue of school board virtual meeting attendance expiring at the end of the year. So as of January 1st, it, it, the only reason we could miss a virtual or a school board meeting would be because of military deployment, like it always was pre-pandemic. But we've had this, during the pandemic, we've had this option where you could miss it if you needed to because of medical illness. So rather than just, they, they want us to urge the legislator to continue to allow us to allow virtual participation in, if there's a state of local emergency that like, you know, hopefully we won't reach that a point where, where we were before where it had to be virtual. But if there was something like that occurred again with, with, with the pandemic, or if individual board members are, say, on quarantine or ill with COVID, but well enough to participate in a meeting, they could still, although the public, the main meeting would be public and open, you could participate virtually. And they also asked us to reach out about House bills. There's actually some bills that they've moved to the Senate now, 644 and 645. And we'll forward you these talking points. I can actually email them to you. But those are so that students, for our per pupil counting days, if students are out on illness or quarantine, they can, they can still be counted, which, which may be important this winter. That's about all I have.
Okay, this, this event, scenes behind the Capitol is really an awesome experience for any school board member. It's great networking with other school board members, which we don't have a lot of opportunity to do. We hear about current legislation like Maureen was talking about. And we get to meet with our legislators. So, you know, it's, it's firsthand and it, it really is, for me anyway, in the past, been very special. They usually have it twice a year. They talked about advocacy, which they always do bring up. They were encouraging districts to do a meet and greet with your legislators, have them come and with our ECEC building. It'd be a great tour, it might be an opportunity for us. In addition, I, I did not realize, I've gone to some of the education meetings and I'm on that, that notification of when they have them. But they have so many, there is no way living this far that you can go. I didn't realize they were streamed and you can watch them virtually. So if a bill is coming up and you can, you can get on the, the notification in your email that, you know, there's going to be a meeting this week and this is what they're going to talk about. That's another way that, you know, we can reach out. And then Maureen referred to the teacher shortage. They had a panel, which was really fascinating. There were some folks there that are CRT, Career Technical Education, teachers and administrators, sharing what we can do in our district with that. One program that we have here, the Teacher Cadet Program, I think is, is, it's absolutely outstanding and we need to promote it, do a little bit more for it. Because so often, when I was in the classroom, my students had never heard of it, but they said they wanted to be teachers. And they can actually be mentored and get credit for it. And this program is not something they have to travel to another location for. Other schools come to us for the in-classroom part of it, for them to get their credit. So that was, that was one thing. Bill 567, pathways for PR pros to increase teacher careers is also very exciting because we have some PR pros that would love to become educators and get their degree. And so there is now some help for them, that was, that was another one. And I think, I think the other things you may have mentioned, Maureen. So anyway, it's just a really worthwhile day. Thanks.
Thanks Sheri, thanks Maureen. Any questions for either of those folks?
Maureen, just for clarification, when you were talking about the virtual meetings thing, was it the, the only two things we can, you said miss, and I want to make sure I understood. Is it the only two reasons we can have, we can attend virtually is if military leave? And what was the other one?
As of January 1st, it'll go back to being only, the only reason is deployed by the military. And they're asking us to encourage to, them to leave it, that you can attend virtually. If there's a local state of emergency, if you're on military deployment or have a medical condition where you can't be at a public meeting. So that would include, you know, illness or quarantine.
Thank you.
One final thing on it was that law about, House Bill 4199 is, is a law to repeal, repeal the law requiring schools to start after Labor Day. They were asking for us to advocate after that, like we wouldn't need to get a voucher anymore. And I guess that's moving, that's in the House Education Committee right now. Or it was that last week, or two weeks ago, I guess it was. I haven't heard in, if that's gone anywhere. But it would just not have to apply for a voucher anymore, they're trying to repeal that law.
Yeah, I think they were freely granting those waivers, so it seems kind of like a silly, silly one to have on the books.
Maureen, again, just a question for that virtual meeting attendance. Would that include the ability to vote, or is it just to monitor and participate in discussion?
It was to be able to vote.
Good.
Yeah. Good question.
All right, thank you both. We'll go on to the next item, would be curriculum and instruction update, Jay?
All right, well, thank you. Just a couple of updates over the past month. You know, first, on September 29th, there was a countywide professional development with the ISD around the Trail Social Emotional Learning Curriculum. And we had representatives from all of our buildings attend and participate in that training. And that is a social emotional curriculum that we're piloting at this point. Really just developing some understanding and going to end up bringing to our district school improvement team, having some conversation about if that's something we want to bring to the board to implement district wide. Along with that is a tool that we partnered with the ISD in learning about implementation called Panorama. And it's really a, a social emotional diagnostic to help us really identify, you know, what are some of the supports that students need from a social emotional aspect. Also, we have our second professional development day for collaborative learning time for our teachers coming up on Wednesday. That was a, a big priority this year was to dedicate adequate amount of time for teachers to engage in collaboration around essential standards, scope and sequence, and giving them ample time to be able to sit down and look very deeply at the academic needs of each and every student. So excited for our teachers to be able to come together for the second time, second half day this year. Last one was on the 22nd of September. Actually met with our deans of teaching and learning and our reading and math consultants this morning and had a great conversation about our vertical teamwork that we're going to be launching next week. Really focused on math, ELA and social studies. And, you know, really the core focus of those teams, you know, K-12 is, is looking at our instructional framework, really having a deep understanding about, you know, when we're delivering reading or math instruction, what are some of the core instructional practices that we want to see all teachers delivering during a unit of instruction or a lesson during the day? And, and then also looking at our assessment profile. You know, trying to bring some alignment to the assessment tools that, diagnostic tools that we use specifically for reading and math, so that we're getting a, a deep analysis about student performance. You might recall that last year, we adopted STAR reading and math as a K through 10th grade diagnostic measure. And our teams are really starting to look at all of the other tools that we're using within math and ELA, or excuse me, math and reading other than our general common formative district assessments. So, you know, just trying to bring some alignment across, across the district and across the buildings so that we're looking at, at, you know, common, common data, you know, apples to apples data, making decisions for, for students. And then kind of a, a final note, I know the board always wants to stay up on state testing. Within two weeks at the high school, we're going to be facilitating the PSAT NMSQT, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. 10th graders generally take that in October to be eligible for the National Merit Scholarship. And you might have seen a post recently. I'm just going to recognize Lauren Davidson, a high school student who recently was recognized as a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. So big congratulations to Lauren.
Thanks Jay. Anything to add there Randy?
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, let's go on to the safety plan. You want to start with that Randy or Jay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in on that. Board, since, since our last meeting, the mechanics of the safety plan, there hasn't been any additional changes to the plan in terms of protocols, mitigation, you know, strategies, the quarantining practices, all of that has stayed status quo since the last meeting. We can continue to compile, compile data, you know, I'll continue to get that data in front of the board. You know, you know, just a reminder that, you know, we are watching as it's connected, you know, to an end date out there. You know, six weeks after the, the 512 vaccine becomes available, we are watching that, probably like many families are out there. So, you know, as soon as we hear something, I'll, I'll get that information to the board. It would be our, you know, it would be our, you know, I guess, operational endeavor to stick to that when, when that deadline does arrive. You know, in terms of the high school data, we'll continue to, to get that, that data in front of the board. We know that, that, that's, you know, a decision that was made prior to the start of the school year administratively. And so I want to make sure we're, we're keeping the board updated with, with our thoughts on re-engagement or any adjustment to the safety plan as it relates to, you know, nine through 12, that, that may vary from, from the K-8 that's currently there. But, you know, having said all that, the plan itself. But, you know, having said all that, the plan itself is still intact since the last board meeting. Take any questions or if the board wants to have any conversation on that, this would probably be the agenda item.
Yeah, I'd like to open with this and kind of just, again, for those that, the public may have not attended all the board meetings since August, so they understand where we're at today. And I'm going to offer some transparency for myself, allow the other board members to do the same. In August, there was quite a debate en masse, whether they be required or recommended. And ultimately, we came out of that board meeting with a motion, which I made, that we would follow the most restrictive of the two counties, Kalamazoo or Van Buren, health departments directives. The basis for that, in my mind, is that we're a dual-county district. Yes, we report to Van Buren, but I would say, at least, I don't know the statistics, so I'm not going to even gather to guess, but we have a lot of students that live in Kalamazoo County. That motion passed that night. There was no directives at that time by Van Buren or Kalamazoo, but before the school started, Kalamazoo did come down with the mandate, Van Buren chose not to. They followed a recommended status. So that's where we landed with K through 6. And the administration made some decisions, reading that directive, if you're cohabitating in the same building, the directive really applied to 7th and 8th grade as well. I support that. I support the public health decisions and what they're going to make, just being clear here. What I fought for that night is I didn't think that we should be making public health decisions. I think we need to leave it up to our public health officials. I believe the national and federal CDC guidance is really pushing it down for locals to make decisions, and unfortunately, all the way to local school boards. So, many have made decisions one way or another, whether you like it or not. So you can go to a school board meeting where they're not allowing masks, and I guarantee you, you'll have parents there that are not happy with the school board because they've not passed a mask requirement. Now, I'd like to see this board be open to allowing the administration to relax the mandate, to highly recommend it, to the 9 through 12. I'm not here to make a motion tonight. I'm just, let's be open to this. The administration has that control. The only motion that they are directed by, as of right now, is that mandate that, or the Kalamazoo Directive that we passed in August. You know, and again, I follow Randy's comments there, thinking ahead that we do the same for K through L, or K through 8, when the county relaxes their stance. I just have a few more things I want to read here and then I'll allow others to jump in. I think the Kalamazoo Health only mandating K through 6, I think, like I said, we agree it makes sense, 7th and 8th grade in the same building. But when do we consider relaxing at the high school? That's my concern. I have a concern with that. I think we're being a little bit overreaching. High school, 16 and up were able to get the vaccine in April, 12 and up were able to get the vaccine in May. That was 22 weeks ago. How long do we wait? The ones that choose not to get vaccinated may never choose to get it. The Kalamazoo Health Department says they will rescind their order, case 6, 6 weeks after 511-year-old can get the vaccine. If they follow through with that statement, why would we not relax masks at that time as well? I think waiting 22 to 24 weeks is overreaching. As long as our positivity rates, let me be clear here, as long as our positivity rates are low, I have confidence in this administration, how they will track it and how they will do contact tracing and quarantining to maximize, and this is my goal, to maximize in-person education. Allow other board members to speak, please. Do we have any other comments? I'll move on to the next item. All right?
I'd like to now move on to the next item. I'd like to roll the ball.
Please, this is not an opportunity for you to speak at this time. Please, respect the public forum. All right, we're going to move into new business. First item is evaluation tool that we need to pass a motion on. As you're all aware, we're working with the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators, and they have an evaluation tool that we use to evaluate Randy. Randy and I have participated in the president, superintendent, and trainer session of that. The rest of us are scheduled for evaluation training moving forward. And I'll entertain that motion that we accept that tool as presented. Anybody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mark. I can support that. Any questions from the board on the training, upcoming training, or conversation around next steps? I can say that the initial training, while she said it would take three hours, we were done in two. She anticipates that that would be the same for the rest of us. I know, Maureen, you're going to participate in the group one, so you'll be on with, she does one of those every month. So you won't be the only board member, probably, that would be a single board member attending that meeting. But we can, as we get the materials and have some conversation, we're having ours before yours, we'll pass that along to you. Any final questions on the evaluation tool? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right. Next item is the additional furniture order. And as Pam alluded to earlier, that order is in your packet for $110,009.75. And I had a note in there, I'd done a little homework myself, that that does leave, I estimated around $250,000 in contingency. Would anybody like to make that motion as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Vicki. Does she have support?
Support.
Thank you, Ted. Any final questions for Pam on that? Not hearing any? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Why didn't you vote on the mask mandate? Just vote on everyone.
Please, we're not taking public comment at this point. That was at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
You have a question. You can answer to the people here.
The last item on the agenda under new business is the appointment of the M S A B delegates for the November 11th session. I had not heard back from anybody. I think I'm actually going to be able to make that delegation dinner up in Grand Rapids, so I could be appointed as one, but I do believe we need one alternate. Is that correct? So, is anybody planning attending that night up in Grand Rapids? Anybody on the fence? Ted's on the fence.
I emailed you. I can't, I can't attend because I'm working on an emergency department shift. So, I am planning on, it was, the conference itself is mixed virtual, it's hybrid, but the delegate assembly, you have to be in person. So, sorry, I can't attend, but I might do some of the other conference days if anyone else is going. I just can't switch that evening.
I think with Ted on the fence, I think we could put me as the primary. I'll make that motion. I'll be the primary delegate. Ted can be the alternate. And I think that will be sufficient for us to participate in that meeting. Do I have support? Thank you, Sherri. Any other questions on that? Ted, if you do plan to go, let me know. All right, no other discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Oppose? All right, motion carries. Randy, you're up.
Good evening, board. Just a couple additional comments this evening. First of all, I want to thank everybody that took part in planning for homecoming. If you had a chance to come out to the festivities, that was a great, great week in the district leading up to Friday night. And, yeah, just a great event, but lots of behind-the-scenes activity, lots of work, lots of grounds and maintenance and planning, and it takes many hours to pull that evening off. So, want to publicly thank our grounds crew, maintenance. We had a great hot dog sale, our local union, appreciate everybody supporting that, that goes to a great cause for our students. And, yeah, just all-around great time. Couple other items that happened that recently, I just want to give an update to the board on the funds that were raised for our annual walk-a-thon. This is a K through 8 activity. There's a lot of money raised this year after a year hiatus, I think, maybe two years, I'm not sure, that predates me. But we were pushing, you know, $70,000 between the three parent groups, right? So you've got an early elementary, you've got a later elementary, and then you've got a middle school. And just about split three ways, not quite, early and later pulled in a little more, I think, than the middle school. But we're not really keeping score on that. It's just an overall fantastic effort by the community and the students. That money will go through our parent organizations directly back into our schools. And just a great community event at those as well. We had our new liaison officer there, we had Matteawan PD down there, I got to know some of the team there. We had our, some first responders, I think one of our EMTs was a graduate coming back, so that was awesome, and the kids really eat that up, they love that, lots of good energy. So thank you, parents, community, the staff that put that together. Again, many hours planning that event, and it went off really well. Kind of keeping the impact here going, the update on impact, M P E F, our educational foundation, dispersed $25,000 of Brainstrong Grant Awards recently to various teachers throughout the district. And again, a testament to the community's support and money's going directly back into our teachers, kind of encouraging creativity and in the classroom and engagement. And so, you know, we're excited this year to see kind of how those monies are going to kind of filter into the teachers' hands and, you know, what's going to come of that. So stay tuned for updates there. Moving into a couple operational items, we are bidding out a chiller for the middle school. I kind of briefed the board on this. The clock is a-ticking on that one. Appreciate the ops guys and gals kind of keeping that going. Worth the useful life on that. I want to say that's every bit of 25 years, that chiller is connected to the AC. It does just what the name says, it chills the air. So, kind of critical to that operation there. It is limping along, it's working, we're going to get it through the, well, I don't know, it was 84 today, so I said we're going to get it through the hot months, but hopefully that's coming to an end. But, timeline-wise, we're going to solicit bids on this, we're going to have bids to the board in November. The reason we've got the foot on the gas here is because we've got to get that ordered before the first of the year to get it here by the summer. And that's, and that's still going to be tight. I mean, we're at least six, seven months out, just with supply chain kinds of things still. So that's happening, we'll get that bid going. Brian and his crew are working on that, but definitely needed. And we don't want to get in a situation next year where it goes out and then we're really scrambling and don't have AC, because you can't just, you know, walk down to Menards and buy this thing. You know, I'll have some direction for the board on funds for that. You know, we could pay for that out of general fund. I'm going to present the board with another option, though, potentially out of using some contingency dollars through a building, building and site line item. But that'll probably come at the November meeting and we'll have a little more prep on that. Now, one thing to keep in mind, the high school chiller, there's several of them, right? So, there's one at the high school, that's not that far behind this, this old dog at the middle school. So, what we're going to do is classic operations move here, we're going to rob parts off of the old one at the middle school that are still working well. We'll put those on the high school one. We're going to be good for a year or two, but just, we'll be coming back to the board, you know, maybe in 12 months, 14 months, doing some prep work, looking at replacing that chiller at the high school. And again, great mileage out of these two units, talking 20-plus years. I think we beat the odds on that. So, we'll keep you posted on that one. I did update the board on a minor sewer line issue that sprung up, literally, last week. Really stinks, stinky situation. We got that under control, there's, the unfortunate thing is the access point is right in the middle of the playground. I mean, you can't make this stuff up, it's right in the middle of the playground at E C E C. So we have alternative kind of outdoor things going on while the playground's shut down. It is excavated already, I think, we know where it's at, had to remove a playground structure. You know, it's never simple, right? Just like it's not at home, same here. We'll have that buttoned up by week's end. And then we're going to pull all the chips out of there, we're going to bring in new chips and kind of thoroughly clean everything. It's pretty well-contained to that area. Unfortunately, you know, it's got to get fixed. Toilets are functional at E C E C, there, you know, no issue there, no need to close the building, you know, so it's still functioning, but just not, just not up to the standard we need. And better now than in the middle of winter. So we'll keep the board updated there. By the way, we don't feel this had anything to do with new construction. You know, the playground's there, we don't feel that, I think just over time, it wore out. And as is the thing with sometimes when you've got a cracked pipe or a leaking, you know, pipe, it's going to take time, sediment kind of pulls in there, dirt, and it eventually will clog. So, we don't believe it was the result of anything with new construction. Just bad timing and kind of an awkward spot for it to be in, but we'll keep you posted there. Just a comment about the stadium lights as well. If you were at homecoming, you noticed the lights went out on one side. And if you were at the home game a couple weeks ago, we had trouble getting the bank of lights on. That is about 30-year-old circuitry. And we'll have a plan to the board to fix that. We will, in the meantime, we'll have backup lighting for the last two home games. We won't be able to permanently fix that this season. Again, we're going to spec out, we're going to order shift to LED lighting, twice as bright, twice as efficient. So we're working those specs up currently, but just kind of wanted to address that, and maybe for those listening publicly, that is not something that, you know, somebody's doing intentionally to be funny, that the cooldown cycle on that's a good 20 minutes. So as those breakers heat up, they'll trip. There's not much we can do about it. I mean, timing on when they come on, we're going to try to time that better. We had them on probably a little bit too early because we wanted them to fire up during homecoming. So there's like this tight window that the operations people are kind of calculating, but we'll have backup lighting for the next two games and probably a plan in front of the board here on cost, I would say, in the next couple months. Note about street construction. Has anybody noticed the street, the street construction? I'm sorry. Probably past their deadline, but a lot of rain, I think we're hearing rain now, that does not bode well for putting asphalt down tomorrow, probably. But I think they're waiting to get blacktop down, and then that's going to be buttoned up. So, just want to, while I've got the mic here, thank the community for their patience. I have received phone calls about what I can do to speed this up. It really is out of my hands. I'm out there in the lines with you as well, picking my kids up and, you know, coming in, but I think they're moving as quickly as they can, but we're very close. I think we're just waiting for blacktop out there. And as soon as that gets down, I think we'll be back to more of a normal traffic flow. I've had a lot of people ask me, the three-way stop out there, well, you know, what's the deal with that? Did the school put that down? We did not put that down. I'm not pointing fingers. Probably not a bad idea just to allow traffic to flow off of Murray, right, and kids to cross and all. allow traffic to flow off of Murray, right, and kids to cross and all that, that, from what I understand, is temporary, so that's the last I heard, but just would throw that out there. And then, one other item on operations, I know this is lengthy, again, we've got a couple excursions, you know, we call them four-wheelers in the transportation department, the non-bus vehicles, so some of y'all have been around a while, and probably driven in those excursions, those are pretty much done, we've got one that's roadworthy, we are going to be soliciting bids on that, it's already happening, they're probably on my desk, those will come back to the board. For a couple options there, we've also got an aging district plow truck, where they've repeatedly patched floorboards and whatnot, you know, that's seen a lot of service, so just putting that out there from an operational standpoint, Board, you're going to see some probably information come through on there, those weren't completely in the budget, but I think we're going to be okay, and we can talk about funding probably at the next board meeting, but, you know, just watch for that, a lot of good use out of this equipment, that's for sure. Couple items to close with, boys, the tennis team took regionals this weekend, if you caught that on Facebook, pretty proud of them, it's hard to believe we're already at playoffs coming in, right, we're in week six already, so want to congratulate the coach and the team on that, and want to encourage, you know, the board, as much as able to check into some of these events, get out there, I know we're all busy, but wow, it's just great to see our teams out there competing, and, you know, including our band, so the band's really hopping this year, they took first place at the last two competitions, and actually, I think at the last competition, there's a grand champion award, so there's, it's all ranked, and then there's an overall kind of grand champion, and they did get the grand champion nod at the last marching band competition, and just super proud of them, great, great performances are happening, and just a result of a lot of hard work by our students and our staff out there. That's all I've got written down, but unless you've got questions for me.
I think my daughter would want me to correct you that they were grand champion at both of them.
Thank you. Tell your daughter, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Randy on the superintendent report? Thank you, Randy.
Scott, hang on a second.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Randy, you were going to talk about the health clinic?
Thank you, yes, I was, so, as, Board, as you know, there's space in ECEC, and those listening, community, maybe you're not aware of this, there's a large, I want to say 800 square foot room in ECEC, the Early Childhood Education Center, that has been set aside for a community health clinic. Last week, I received word that that grant cycle, which typically only renews every five years, so we are, we were really entering into, I think, year two, or maybe it was year one, that five-year hiatus, well, I think because of everything going on medically, the state re-upped on that line item, so that did pass, that did get put through, and got a great email from Ascension, who was who we were pursuing, partnering with, that grant has been approved, and they're beginning the paperwork to begin the partnership here with Matteawan, and I would imagine that paperwork will probably take through the first of the year to complete, and then we'll be sitting down having planning meetings, and I would imagine, I mean, this is me speaking, a year from now, we could see that clinic open, and that would be the clinic open to the Matteawan community, the greater area, staff, students, super convenient, right in our backyard, so, big win, and I do know the board had a lot of pre-planning in that with Dr. Buckler, and I'm happy to pick that torch up and be part of that, but I think that's worth celebrating for sure. Thank you, Mark.
Well, yeah, and I would add thanks to Mark, because he worked a lot with Robin on that as well, you know, having that facility in Matteawan, I think will be a great addition, I assume that they could even do athletic physicals there, where we have dispersed students across Kalamazoo County to try to get their physicals, so that'd be a
For sure.
A very convenient thing for them as well. Other comments, questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Maureen, do you support?
Support.
Thank you, Vicki. Any final discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you.
These people think so little about you that they wouldn't even vote on it tonight. They're running it